Take the motion to approve today the Dennis gentleman.
So moved.
Right.
I'll second.
Call for a vote.
Tippet, aye.
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 The minutes.
I did have the opportunity to read the minutes, didn't find anything out of order.
I almost forgot to send them to you.
Yeah, I found them before clock this morning.
I know, I'm sorry.
But I didn't find anything wrong.
No.
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Okay.
I'll second.
Call for a vote.
Tippet, aye.
Aye.
Bull's aye.
Claims.
I also had the opportunity to look through the claims.
I saw nothing out of line.
Okay.
Can you just initial those two in here?
I will.
Yep, perfect. Cause they're, they're actually already in there.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Call for a vote on the claims.
Tippet, aye.
Aye.
Bull's aye.
It's, I held off on, I don't have to talk to Derek, we, we still had a bunch from Central Iowa Juvenile for Transportation ones too now. So Luke and I had some conversations yesterday. So I still am holding off on a few. Um, and then the, the regional mental health stuff I was telling you about. I wasn't quite hundred percent agreeing with the amount she's saying, so that's what I'm falling back up on. Between the hub and all that, because it should've been more than payroll that they covered, should've been like all the expenses.
It's supposed to be bad.
Have the girl from ASAC come back here?
Yes, they're gonna be on next week.
Good, nice.
Fourteenth to come talk to you guys. Yep, so next week is gonna be a busy one, cause you have those hearings on the conservation ground. So I was gonna ask you, do you wanna just do two separate meetings or have a recess in between?
The other one's over noon hour, right?
Yep, so I was probably just gonna.
How much?
Post two different ones.
Due to your judgment, we're gonna be up here most of the day anyway, but I mean, if there's gonna be a, a law between.
Oh yeah, I would assume so.
Well, then, two meetings.
Okay, and then that Wednesday morning one to the range.
We can do whatever. Nine thirty?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. County Honors, quarterly report.
Big money coming in. Mr. Mine is plat books or copy.
So can I have a motion to go on file the county honors report from peace collected?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, call for a vote.
Tippet, aye.
Aye.
Bull's aye.
You want that folder in a special way, right?
Yep, trampled. It was in those lateral files in my office.
The sheriff quarterly report, I have looked at it, you guys definitely won't look at it, don't you?
I did.
You got printed copies? Awesome.
Yep.
How about we let that, oh, excuse me Barb, I did not. I'm sorry.
That's fine. I just would like to settle land use hearing for Cole Baumgartner for Tuesday, November fourth at nine fifteen.
What township are we in?
You are in eighty-six, nine.
Is that Polk?
Harrison.
For Harrison?
Yeah.
He used to have a big, right over there.
No, it's Polk, it's Polk.
Yeah. Should be up in the very, yeah.
What time did you say, Barb?
Nine fifteen, please.
Well, can I have a motion from you gentlemen?
I was, make a motion to set the land use meeting for the Cole Baumgartner. But Tuesday, November fourth at nine fifteen. And I will second that.
Okay, call for a quick vote. Tippet, aye.
Aye.
Bull's aye.
Thank you.
Thanks Barb.
Have a good day Barb.
Thank you.
How about we jump down to the liquor license? Just give us a minute to look through the. Okay, looks like everything's in order.
And they're ahead of the game.
Well. Yeah, two months.
Usually we get it on today, one for the weekend. I would make a motion to approve the class C retail license, liquor license for Walnut Ridge venue.
I will second that motion.
Okay. Call for a vote.
Tippet, aye.
Aye.
Bull's aye.
Now, it's all resolution.
Yes, that was the one from last week. Yep.
Okay.
Go on to.
Yes, please.
I'm gonna check that one. Yes. And this other one is the application of alternative method, that's just for.
Oh, yeah, so that's that equalization notice, if you recall a few weeks ago, I told you we were assigned the five percent residential increase for equalization and the assessor disputed it or whatever. So we got the final order that it's zero.
So we have to do the five percent?
No, we don't have to do anything.
Really?
No. So.
So what does the taxpayer understand this is?
Yeah. So I will not be sending out equalization notices, because it was, you'll get your regular assessment if it increased, but the assessor does not have to follow the five percent increase. In my office, we just rolled the files, so I'll be starting the groundwork for our evaluation report. But I haven't got the rollbacks from the state or anything yet, to tell me what to apply for that. But we always wait until that equalization before we.
Well, on the news, I know last night, this morning, the states did not get the revenue in.
Right.
You know what I mean? Do you think this has maybe got something to do with it that?
Possibly, that's what I'm waiting to see what the rollbacks are gonna be. Don't know if that'll affect what they tell us we can apply or not. But it really shouldn't, because that's our local dollars. Just because they tell us we have to increase, it doesn't go to the state. We had our public tests for the election equipment yesterday too, so things wanted.
This resolution, we, we approved that last week, we just had to sign it, right?
Yep, cause the, you guys signed the twenty eighty and I had to get that all to.
Yeah, that's good, that's. Was that what you decided?
Yes.
Yeah, but it was on the last week's agenda though.
Yeah, yeah, that's, okay.
I put repealing the old one on there too.
Yeah.
And that was in the full minutes. Never looked, are those vehicles still out there?
Oh yes. Every day I look.
I don't get that.
No. Cause they had to have. There's a vehicle out there that had to go to the.
Two of them.
Two of them.
And then they're just sitting out there. I took them off our insurance though, cause they, they have the titles in their name now.
Well, one of those out there is.
The other one is ours. What are we gonna do with that one? We should sometimes talk about that.
Yes.
Cause I have the keys for it right here. I was gonna go down to the Abbey Center, Tracy, and I don't know if this little key would be to that closet.
Might be.
Cause it's just a closet like this one, right? But I did show her there was no locks on those other doors.
Okay, okay.
I don't know if that's something they're gonna want. But Rick or Justin should be able to handle that, right?
Yeah, they can. Uh, well, like I told her, I said, once the door's shut on the outside, nobody can get in there anymore.
Right, unless they let them in.
Yeah.
But what if it would get shut, nobody's in there or something?
Well, that's why I said, if you remember the numbers.
Oh, they're talking about the interior ones.
That's what I mean, as long as that door, you know, is shut, you still can't get in that room, period. Granted, these other rooms do have their own individual locks, so it takes two keys, one to get in on the main door and then one to get in their offices.
Yes, I don't know if that's what she's wanting more locked.
That's my new, okay. I had a chance to go through the sheriff's report, so I'm done.
You too.
Yep. So I'll take a motion to accept his quarterly report.
I'll make a motion to accept the sheriff's quarterly report.
Second.
Okay, call for a vote.
Tippet, aye.
Aye.
Bull's aye.
And report.
I had nothing. I did a zoom last week with the executive committee for the juvenile detention. Uh, they're putting together plans to move forward and look for a new CEO, CFO. That was pretty much what their discussion was.
Were you, did you ever ask them about those old invoices, were chance?
Yeah, there's a, there's a lady we can call.
Do you know what her name is?
Cassie Ruth.
Yesterday I sent out an email, um, because we get the transportation bills for those from a separate person than the other ones.
Yeah, it didn't sound like, when I raised the question, we were the only county, the only county wanting an itemized.
Correct, and I did respond back, because a lot of those we were holding, because we never got our answers that we had originally asked for, um, and we still have not had the breakdown. And a concern that Luke and I had yesterday was when they're transferring these, the person that's sitting there, we're getting charged like thirty bucks an hour and a top while they sit there and wait too. So, they're coming in quite high.
So the driver and an assistant?
So Luke and I might actually sit down with you and talk a little bit.
All right. The gift that keeps on giving.
Yeah, I mean, if we have over a hundred thousand that they're saying that's outstanding, that's a concern, because we're gonna have to amend the budget again for that.
Say their number was one eighty-one.
And that's where I was like, where did they come up with that? Because what I have for paper invoices does not equal that. And that's just it, some of those invoices were overlapping their dates of service and it wasn't driving to my standards to pay them, so.
That was, that was the last of my meetings last month.
I didn't have nothing, but I will say I had a lot of phone calls since last Tuesday meeting. Over the shoes, the safety shoes and everything. So I think maybe the, we should get together the safety committee and have a meeting before this goes any further with Ray and Doug. Lot of concerns.
Like they didn't like the, like was it from employees, I assume?
Yeah, a lot of what ifs, what ifs, you know, I, I see where they're coming from. Uh, if we're gonna, I'll throw it out there. If you're gonna make them mandatory to wear steel toe shoes, uh, the first year that you implement it, we're gonna say, we're gonna give you X amount of dollars, all right? The guys at secondary roads do have like two pairs of shoes during a year. They got a regular leather shoe that they wear, say it's steel toe, whatever. But then winter time comes, then they go with an insulated boot. You know what I mean? So that first year, you know, if we make them wear steel toe, we're only giving money for one pair of shoes. Well, the insulated boots are a lot higher than a regular steel toe shoe that is not insulated.
And insulated steel toes probably big money.
Yes. So that's why I feel like we should have a safety meeting, committee meet again. And kinda iron this out and bring it back to us, you know?
I think that's kinda the guidance you gave them last week too, but I don't know how soon their meeting.
Yeah.
I'm not on that committee.
I haven't talked to Ray about it, I don't know how Doug and him was.
I'm sending an email right now, so that I don't forget.
I've been a little busy far, so.
Oh yeah, yeah, it's that time of year.
How much range you get?
I had a half inch yesterday morning, um, by ten o'clock, and we had rain last night, so I had puddles again, so I never looked today, but. Okay, that's about all I have for any new or old business.
Do we, do we have a meeting Monday at the Kirkwood Center at one?
Yes.
Thirteenth.
She did send out a reminder.
Yeah, I didn't RSVP because I have to leave by two.
I don't, I think she just kinda sets up the tables, they kinda have refreshments.
Cause last year we did the same thing.
Yeah.
Or the spring we did it.
Yeah.
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 And that's kinda the same thing it is again.
Yeah.
They just kinda say what they did and what they're offering and.
I mean, I could, I could stop by, but like I said, it's an hour into it, I gotta get out.
It's up to you.
Okay. See how the day's going.
Yeah, you showed up the last one, I know.
Yeah.
And then, have you guys got an email from this pipeline on October twenty-seventh?
I do not believe so.
I think, did she just send it to you and I maybe?
You got it too?
I think so.
That's gonna be up to Benton Country Club.
Yeah, to meeting thing.
I, I have had a couple of calls on the properties with conservation that are gonna be for sale. Uh, the main one is, is the dog pound in the dog property, dog pound property, is that in the city limits?
Yep.
Okay.
I can, cause uh, yeah, cause in the abstract it included the annexation, which happened in the early two thousands. And there's a board resolution, it didn't say, I don't think I, I don't think I recall the number, but.
Back in two thousand when they were gonna subdivide all that out in there.
Right, um, yeah, cause there was a lot of movement with the city and those parcels out there.
They were even plating out acquisition plots for roads and.
Oh, okay, so it was a big thing.
It was more than, yeah.
Okay.
I remember that. I was the real estate deputy then, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it, it looked like they, they, yeah, there was just a lot of stuff going on in that, that early two thousands area. There's more city relevant, but like the court of four had to do resolutions and stuff to agree.
And those are currently advertised too.
They, what was the public hearing notice, we're not, the notice we submitted was just for them to come and voice their concerns or talk to us next week.
Yep.
Then we'll decide.
Yep, then you guys will make the decision on what to do.
And then we'd have to publish notice again for that to take part in here too. Yeah, you probably, yeah, that was in the newspaper last week.
Yeah. Phone call started last week.
Yep.
Okay, I guess that's about all I got. Any public comments?
Just one little question, um, funding the extra council that you guys use, how is that budgeted into stuff? As far as where you need extra counsel, when you guys have to get outside counsel, how is that figured in to the overall budget? I'm just curious, like when you pay for outside counsel, you have to bring them in and pay them, where does that money come from and how is it budgeted?
We gotta figure it in around budget.
Depends on what department too, so like the supervisors has some in theirs, um, the HR, the old HR department used to have some under theirs and then the county attorney's office.
So do you know what that total number is?
We can run reports.
What's that?
We can run financial reports.
Well, I was just curious, because I just know the last few years it's been climbing like crazy, what you're using for outside counsel, so.
I mean, and they're, they're transparent, it's listed out in our claims, that like we, if we approved a claim for it, it'll be in our claim register. But we could run specific reports that are outside legal fees.
Yeah. Well, I did go down and talk to them, saw the numbers, I just wanted the numbers, I didn't want what the cases were, nothing like that, I just wanted the numbers, and I just saw that it's actually climbing. So that's why I was curious how you budget, how, I mean, one year could be five thousand, next year might be a hundred thousand, so I'm just, that's why I'm trying to ask the question, where that, how do you figure that into anything, you know?
We always do for union negotiations, that's a given.
There's a little in the sheriff's budget for that, I'm assuming there's some in uh, secondary roads to pay for.
Those kinda things I get, like this, this deal where you get into bigger cases or things, you know, or costly, that's what I said is.
Yes, they are.
Like unforeseen stuff.
Yeah, and, and sometimes that involves, when it involves insurance, like I think that's part of like.
Yep, well.
What we pay for, you know, because the heartlands.
Yeah, and sometimes we don't pay that, we pay it probably in our insurance premium, so you don't see an extra claim going out, it's included in our premium.
Well, since you brought that up, then the second question is, insurance premiums, did you get any notices on, because of some of the losses you've had and some that are pending? Does the insurance company come back to you guys at all and say, hey, we're gonna have to do something about this?
They won't middle year, we've already approved our renewals, so.
I don't know, we adjust it upon renewal based on claims.
When is that usually adjusted?
She usually comes in May.
Yeah. I think it is in May. So it's already coming past.
Yeah, yeah, cause it's per fiscal year.
And they'll send that out probably in uh, March.
Yeah, it's usually after our budget's approved, but.
We get a notification of what it's gonna be.
So this last May did it go up, or were you fine?
We stayed the same, but remember I.
We didn't get a premium, like years past, cause we're in a pool with those other counties, what is it, ten?
Ten.
Um, so they looked in the adjustments and sometimes we actually get a kickback, revenue back from our premiums paid in too.
Just curious, how that operated.
We've used outside legal counsel, we've been doing that for years.
Right.
Yeah, just kinda, every situation's different, like when we've had a cybersecurity or a different incident, it's just kind of an individual basis what, what happens.
I know in the past, sometimes we have traded a prosecution with another county. They did a case for us, so we do a case for them on, depending on what it was.
Yeah, cause uh, cause ethics play a huge role in that determination a lot of times.
Well, I know there's some of the other parties abuse stuff here, they gotta refuse themselves, they say, they do certain things they might.
That's basically what that's covering.
Conflict of interest, yeah.
Question, has anybody been on the Van Horn Road, has anything done? Signs?
Oh, down the corner.
Yeah.
I have not.
I haven't been on it either, since our last meeting. I didn't, I didn't know if the DOT had moved those lights, if anything had happened with that.
I don't know, I haven't been by either since, I think when I went over to Keystone, they come back that way.
We developed, that was two weeks ago, I didn't notice anything.
Yeah, it wasn't that, but I come back from P and K. Wednesday, and it wasn't done Wednesday, the lights were not on the stop sign on two eighteen, we're not done there.
Okay.
Uh, Shelburne, Westside Road is open now.
And that is open, yes. They haven't painted the lines yet.
No, they got the signs down, I went by there yesterday afternoon.
And they set up the pylons up because of the shoulder and that, but still people could use a portion of that new, new road, yeah.
And then down around the Norway area, I think they got their shoulder rock done yesterday, I was told.
Believe they did, yeah, they were working west of Norway yesterday morning.
And they moved up to Mount Auburn area today.
Oh, they did?
Yes.
Well, that would get them.
Yesterday?
They ought to be about wrapped up. I think so. I might take a drive by the Van Horn thing, see on the way back.
Okay.
To see if anything's been done.
Last I knew, when I talked to Meyer about it, that the DOT was the one who was going to actually do the work, put this stuff up.
And he thought last week that it was rumored that the DOT was in possession of the lights.
Right. It was here, just to get them to do something.
I did get a phone call from a farmer and thanked us for the for having our ordinance to keep windmills out. He said, you should just, to see what's going on, take a drive through Tama County on Highway 63.
Is it bad?
They said it is a mess. Gravel roads are torn out, stuff piled up in fields. Just shows up on somebody else's. One guy had a guy that called him, he said, I got beans over here and I got dirt piled all over them and nobody said a thing. So I might have to go for a drive and see what that looks like.
Derek, you got anything? All quiet?
Just sitting here?
Perfect.
You're busy.
Like that.
Monday. Monday you have that Kirkwood. Tuesday you'll have two board meetings. And then Wednesday at 9:30 at the Cedar Valley Range.
Yep.
That's next week.
Yep.
Yeah, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, yeah.
Yep.
Actually, I did one thing, too. I saw some concern about the line painting on the Mount Auburn Road, but I thought I had heard from the county people that they were going to do all the line painting at once, so.
It was kind of nasty yesterday when it was raining.
Yeah.
We can't see.
There was quite a few people really complaining about it.
Meyer hires it done, I know.
Yeah, I thought you said.
And the second thing that is that there's two kinds of paint you can use. One is the oil, which is better, the blast one here. And the other one, when it gets below ivy line, now 50, 80 degrees.
Yeah, so he might be waiting for the temps.
Then they can't use the oil. Then they gotta go to the latex, which does not last as long through the season. So then, of course, you know, it's hard to get this, got them guys here.
Yeah. He kind of started doing some markings to get ready, though. You notice that?
No.
Or marking some poles, so I did notice that, so.
So I'm sure he's on top of it. Just the idea that when he can get that.
I was pretty sure he said that he was waiting for company to come and they're going to do them all at once.
But I didn't want to say that without.
Yeah. I know some of the roads that they did here towards the fall of the year, it got too late. Could not use the oil paint, had to use the other latex paint. Them were pretty faded, because I went over towards Keystone, like I said last week. Took the county blacktop through Van Horn, and boy, some of them, you know, yeah, you can kind of see the line there, but. So that's his discretion, what road needs it, you know what I mean?
Yeah. Well, they resurfaced that one, so there's none on there at all.
Yeah, it's just black.
Yeah.
Okay, I think that's it. Motion to do it here?
So moved.
Second?
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.